Chapter 2 of this training program will cover the role of the superintendent and the board's relationship to the superintendent. The superintendent of schools is the chief executive officer of the school district. As such, the superintendent has many functions and responsibilities which are set forth in state law and education department regulations. The superintendent must enforce all provisions of law, rules, and regulations relating to the management of schools. The superintendent is responsible for all aspects of management and administration of district programs and operations. He or she is responsible for the supervision and direction of all district employees except those who work directly for the Board of Education. See "direct employees" of the Board of Education. The responsibilities of this superintendent are so broad, it's almost as if the position requires superhuman time, energy, and knowledge. The expectations are that the superintendent is to be knowledgeable about curriculum, budgeting, and financial management, personnel and labor relations, facilities and transportation management, capital budgeting and construction management, community and media relations and communications, et cetera. The list is almost endless. Given the breadth of responsibilities, it is essential that boards accord superintendent the opportunity to research questions that require detailed answers. If the superintendent tells you that he or she would get back to the board, there is probably good reason to wait.
We sit at the board table as board members, and we expect the superintendent of schools to have at his fingertips or her fingertips and on the tip of their tongue all kinds of information about any question that we may have as board members. And I think we forget sometimes about the breadth of knowledge that that individual has to have in order to be able to carry out their jobs. We don't sometimes remember that there are tremendous range of topics that they have to cover in order to be able to carry out the responsibilities of a superintendent. And I think we underestimate the range of day-to-day activities that take place in the school district that we hear about sometimes through the rumor mill that also they have to be aware of on that day-to-day basis. There's a tremendous amount of activity both within the school that takes place and also there's tremendous amount of activity that takes place, for example, in the educational area where they're implementing programs or carrying out activities that are part of an overall agenda for educational improvement. And the superintendent's responsible for both sets of activities, and we need to recognize that there's that full range of activity and responsibility that they have, and sometimes that's very broad and very detailed. And we hear about things on a bit-by-bit basis, and we don't recognize it. In fact, that knowledge, while it is very diverse and very pointed, may not be exactly on the tip of their tongue. And I think we need to be cognizant of that. I want to give you two bits of framework. One has to do with a new superintendent, and I'm going to break that into brand-new superintendent from the perspective of the first-time superintendent, and also superintendent who's brand-new to your school district. The brand-new superintendent has to learn both the subject matter of being a superintendent, and that means covering all the different kinds of subjects that are in place that they're going to run into. They're going to run into a series of administrative issues that range from employee relations straight on through to dealing with the nuts and bolts of education law and labor law, and it goes on and on in terms of all the subject matters that they're going to encounter that they never encountered as a, for example, building principal. They're going to also have to learn the people who work in the district, and that's everybody from bus drivers, custodians, straight on through to all the faculty members. They're also going to have to learn the culture of the district, and the culture is not only district-wide, but it's also building-specific. Every building within this will have its own culture. And they're also going to have to learn about you as board members. Now, a new superintendent to the district who may have experience as a superintendent has the advantage of having to know the subject matter, but he has to learn the people of the district. He has to get a feel for the culture across the district and within the buildings. He has to learn about you, and then he has to learn about the application of all that topical knowledge to your district, because every district is different in terms of where they are, especially on educational matters. So the application becomes really important in terms of learning about your district. So what happens when you or your board really want to ask questions of the superintendent, and that superintendent doesn't know that answer right at that moment? A skilled superintendent will say to you, "I don't know the answer, but I'll get back to you." And in this world today with the kind of instant media that we have available to us, there's lots of opportunities for that superintendent to get back to you in a very timely fashion. And I think it's important for us to expect that, in fact, they will get back to us quickly. It's sometimes difficult, depending on the nature of the question, to get that answer to you, and I think you have to respect that fact. For example, if it's a question that requires legal analysis, the superintendent's going to have to go to the lawyers. They may have to do some legal research. That could take a little bit longer. But if it's one of those day-to-day questions, it's simply a matter of getting a hold of the principal and finding out what's going on. There may be some degree of investigation that's got to take place, but it could be no more than a half a day or a day, and then they can get back to you fairly quickly. One of the things that is important, however, is that when the superintendent gets back to you, it needs to be one of those things where it gets back to everybody on the board. And this is an important thing for you to remember, too. When you ask a question, you ought to ask the question in such a way that you copy on the whole board. It's important that the communications be broad enough so that, in fact, the whole board knows the nature of the question, and that when the superintendent responds, the whole board hears the answer. There's no sense in having a one-on-one kind of communication with these things. The rumor mill is going to be pretty extensive, and if you've heard about it, other people will have heard about it, too. And even if you've heard about it today, they're likely to hear about it tomorrow. So you might as well get the question out and get the answer out so everybody has the same information. Remember that fundamental rule: no surprises. It's important that, in fact, you get the information to everybody at the same time so everybody's prepared and there are no surprises. What happens if, in fact, the question has some confidential nature to it? Well, if that's the case, you need to respect the fact that the superintendent is going to be very, very cautious about getting the answer back to you. Probably, if it's a confidential thing that has to do with personnel, the superintendent's going to wait for a meeting and then handle that in executive session. So he may, or she may basically say to you, "This is a confidential personnel matter. I will handle it at the next board meeting." Be patient, and it'll be given to you when the time is right and in the right setting. I tell you, I've had a couple experiences with superintendents that are very important to share, one of which has to do with the experience I had with a superintendent. This was a brand-new superintendent. And he had come from a principalship, and the culture of a building principal is that, and I don't mean this in a pejorative way, but building principals are the kings within their own castle. They really are. They are in control on a day-to-day basis of what happens within that building. The problems arise there, the problems are settled there. They basically run the faculty meetings, they run the disciplinary processes, they're really very much in control of what happens within that building. They become superintendent, and they sit in these meetings, and they have a very diverse group of elected officials who come from different parts of the community, have different perceptions about what it is they think is right or wrong with the school district. And sometimes, we are not necessarily all on the same page, and we come at things with very different perspectives and different sets of values and different sets of concerns. We can be a little bit raucous as a group, and I've seen it happen where we get a little bit out of control and a little bit testy. And this superintendent was brand-new to the superintendency, and he was used to that king-in-the-castle mindset. And when the board started peppering him with questions, he lost it. And he got angry because he could not answer the question, and he got very defensive. And I sat there, and I listened to this, and basically, I lost it. And I lost it with respect to the process that was taking place in that meeting, and I stopped everything. And I said to him, and at that time, I was the board president, and I said to him, "Look, when you run into a situation like this where the board is peppering you with questions that you cannot answer, don't get defensive. Don't try to fight back to the board. You can't answer the question right then and there, but you have time and you have resources at your disposal so you can get the answer to that question. Take the time to say to the board, 'I don't know the answer.' Admit it right up front. I will get you the answer. I will give you the answer at the next board meeting." He listened. He acknowledged that there was a problem in the way he was handling it, and that situation never arose again. He learned that, in fact, it was much better to handle a set of questions or a question that he did not have the information at his fingertips or on the tip of his tongue and defer until a later point in time. So the superintendents will learn how to handle those kinds of situations. What happens if, in fact, the board member gets mad? That, in fact, "I demand this information, and you don't have it, and I want it now." Well, the smart superintendent is basically going to very quietly and very politely be persistent, and what ends up happening is that peer pressure will come to bear on that board member. As long as the superintendent remains composed and basically is very polite and persistent in saying, "I will get you the information. You have to allow me the time to gather it, and I will respond as quickly as I possibly can," the board president will recognize what's going on and will allow that moment to pass and control the situation, and calmer minds will prevail. And I've seen that happen over and over again. So the bottom line is that the breadth of responsibility and the breadth of knowledge that a superintendent must have basically puts them in a position where they have to know a lot, they cannot possibly know everything. Therefore, you've got to be patient, and you have to recognize that there are situations where you're going to ask questions, they don't have the information. Whether you ask those questions via email or you're asked those questions at a board meeting, they're going to need time to get the answers. Make sure that you ask the question so that everybody knows what the question is. Make sure that when you get the answer, everybody knows what the answer is. No surprises. Provide the opportunity for a reasoned and responsible response. Be reasonable in terms of how you ask the question and allow the superintendent to do their job.
The New York State education law has three simple requirements for the board regarding the superintendent of schools. The board must select and appoint a superintendent. Their term of appointment is from three to five years and is renewable, but no tenure may be granted. The superintendent serves at the pleasure of the board, subject to an employment contract. Termination conditions are to be set forth in this contract. The board must annually review and evaluate the superintendent's performance.
The evaluation of the superintendent is critical to your role as a board member. You are a reflection of your community's vision for your school district. You also are responsible for the education of your children. The superintendent is the vehicle through which you accomplish this set of responsibilities. He or she is the key to the success of your responsibilities with regard to the vision and the mission that you have for the community and for the education of your children. Let's spend some time talking about the superintendent's role in carrying out that vision and mission. As a board, it's your responsibility to participate in partnership with the superintendent to set measurable and objective district-wide goals. And in this regard, these goals may be about the community, they may be, hopefully, are about, and necessarily, they have to be about, the educational mission of the district for your students. An example would be that you want to improve the reading program in your school district, and you set some measurable benchmarks for improvement of reading that will take place at, for example, the elementary school level. The administration, in concert with the superintendent, will then figure out a methodology for implementing that particular goal, and they will develop the metrics that will allow you to measure the success of that particular district goal. So the superintendent is basically carrying out that district goal for you and providing the feedback through the measures on the accomplishment of the objective that has been set forth. So the superintendent is the intermediary in carrying out that district objective, that district goal that has been set. The evaluation process is looking at the role that has been established for the superintendent as that intermediary. So you're going to engage in an evaluation, which is really a two-part discussion with that superintendent. Two-part in the sense that part one is, how's it going? How is the process taking place? Are we seeing results? You're just having a discussion about what is actually happening. You're also asking, what is the superintendent's role in that process? How is the management process taking place? Is it being accomplished in a way that makes sense? Are you comfortable with the leadership style and how it is affecting what's going on? There's a lot of parameters that you may be looking at in terms of the role and responsibility of the superintendent as they carry that out. The other part of this thing is to make sure that, in fact, the board and the superintendent are still on the same page with regard to this district goal. These district goals have a life. They usually take two to three years to see some results. And as a consequence, in the course of the two to three years, you may see some turnover in the board, you may see some turnover within the administrative team, and so there is a possibility of some morphing of the circumstances that underpin a district goal. And therefore, you may have the circumstance where, in fact, you drift, and there is a change in interpretation of what that goal means. So you need to reaffirm the underpinnings and the values that are inherent in that district goal and make sure you're still on the same page. So you discuss the progress, you discuss the role that the superintendent is playing in carrying out that district goal as the intermediary between the board and the administration, and you also discuss the overall objective to make sure that, in fact, nothing has changed and you still have the same outcomes that you want based upon the values that underpin that particular objective. The superintendent serves at the pleasure of the board. That's an important concept, and "serves at the pleasure" has a particular meaning in this sense tied into the evaluation, because, quite frankly, the superintendent wants to please you. And in that regard, they need to know that, in fact, they are doing that. If they're not, then they're going to make changes based upon the feedback that you give them. So it's a very important part of the process. You may think it's a task and that's a burden, you may think that it's a kind of thing that's amorphous, but from the superintendent's perspective, it is very, very important. They need the feedback so that they know they're doing the job that you want done. They serve at your pleasure. Are you pleased? If not, what do you want them to change? This is an important part of what they expect of you. It's an important part of what you are responsible to do, because ultimately, you're responsible for what it is that the rest of the district is doing to accomplish the goals that you're setting. So this task that you're undertaking is extraordinarily important, not just because you want the district to succeed, but also because that superintendent is depending upon you to accomplish the job that you've set forth. The other part of this has to do with what I'll call day-to-day relationships with the superintendent. This day-to-day relationship has a foundation, and that foundation is built on a whole set of, I'll call them perceptual perceptions. They have to do with things like competency, responsiveness, confidence, trust, communications, timeliness, harmony, feelings of satisfaction, all these conceptual ideas and feelings that go into the day-to-day relationship that you have between the board and the superintendent or individual members of the board and the superintendent. They are the building blocks of a good relationship. They also need to be openly talked about, and this conversation has to be very honest, very face-to-face, and, quite frankly, not behind the superintendent's back. What tends to happen with these, and I'm going to call them feelings, is that they are the kind of things that we would prefer as board members to talk about in the parking lot after meetings, before meetings, over coffee with our colleagues. We don't like to confront people with how it is that we feel, and yet, if you think about the things that I laid out, there are more feelings than they are the kinds of things that we want to talk about as criteria for a relationship. And yet, they are criteria in terms of how it is that we look at that relationship. I guess there's no other way to put this thing, and that is that you cannot have a relationship with a superintendent that is not open and honest. We talk about the concept of transparency. That concept has to be fully vetted with the superintendent. They need to know, and I'm going to use the word "trust." Trust is not a touchy-feely thing. Trust is a very concrete idea. It is built on solid building blocks, a solid foundation. So you need to be as open and honest and blunt as you possibly can be without being nasty about it. You've got to have a concrete and honest conversation with the superintendent about these kinds of feelings. Sometimes, it's an easy conversation, because the feelings are good feelings. Sometimes, it's a difficult conversation, because the feelings are a little bit out of whack. You're a little bit uncomfortable, because things don't feel so good. But you need to have that conversation. It's about a relationship. If you don't have trust in that superintendent, or that superintendent does not trust you, this relationship is going to fall apart, and I've actually seen that happen. Had that happened, we lost a superintendent. He retired early, because he felt that he could not trust the board anymore. And it had to do with how he felt. Now, it was one of those things that he felt that way over a course of time. It was a year or two in the making, and then he got to the point where, in fact, he felt that he couldn't trust anymore, and then he retired, and he moved on. So this is something you need to pay attention to. Don't treat it lightly. You have the formal kind of objective based upon, or evaluation based upon, concrete objectives, and then you have this sort of day-to-day relationship evaluation that has to do with the feeling side of things. One last point, and that has to do with the fact that the superintendent is a human being. And as humans, they have health and emotional pieces to them that have to also be paid attention to. I've had the experience that superintendents can somehow or other put up incredible bursts of energy, and they can work so hard that they kind of wear themselves out. You will see it. They can work 15, 16 hours a day. They're there at 7:30 in the morning, and they're gone at the end of the last event of the day. And if they do that five days a week or six days a week, depending on what the circumstances are, eventually, it's going to take its toll. You've got to be very, very careful. We had one superintendent where every year, we would say to that person, "Please take care of your health." Unfortunately, we lost that superintendent. But it was one of those things, we saw it. We saw it in his behavior, we saw it in the way he reacted. He was literally pushing himself so hard that we knew that we were going to have a problem with regard to his health, and yet, we could not change that behavior. So be aware that they are human beings, and they, like all of us, have certain kinds of frailties, and we've got to be cognizant of the fact that sometimes, they need to be told, "Take a vacation. Be aware of your health." So the evaluation's really important in many dimensions. Do your job.
The board has many tasks and considerations as part of the recruitment process. Most important, it's essential that the board define in writing the attributes of the person it wants to fill the open position. It is essential for the recruitment process, it is the first step in shaping the advertising for the open position, and is essential for resume review, preliminary interviews, and the ultimate interview by the board. It ensures consistency throughout the process. The board must define the timeline, work backwards from the ideal start date for filling the position. Obviously, build into your timeline the departure of the existing incumbent. Do you want to plan for some overlap for orientation purposes? Will you need an interim to fill the vacancy? Do you have an internal employee who can serve in this capacity? If there is no internal person who can serve as an interim, contact the BOSIS District Superintendent for help in filling the vacancy. There are usually many retired superintendents that are available to fill vacant positions on an interim basis at per day rates. The board must choose a process for conducting a search for a superintendent. This can include a search conducted by a BOSIS District Superintendent, the State School Boards Association, or an outside consultant hired by the district. The board should decide how far-reaching it wants the search to be. Should the candidate be from New York State, or can the candidate have experience outside New York State? Is there a strong inside candidate for the superintendent position? This is an important consideration. The board may decide that it does not want to pursue a search or outside recruiting process, or it may do so to "test the market," but terminate the process at some point knowing that the candidate pool does not measure up to the inside candidate. It's important to recognize that it's unfair to other candidates to have them go through the full process of external recruitment if the board already has decided on an inside candidate. Also, be aware that the network behind candidates will probably have disclosed the existence of the strong inside candidate anyways, which will have eliminated some of the best candidates already. The board should prepare a uniform questionnaire and scoring sheet for every candidate that it interviews when choosing to fill a position. This will assure fairness and consistency in the evaluation of all candidates. Be sure to assign questions to individual board members prior to the interviews. This also assures consistency in the interview process. The review of interviews should occur immediately after all candidates have completed the process. This will assure that the recollection of the board members is current and that comparisons among board members can be aired openly and different perspectives shared while information is fresh in everyone's mind. The board should attempt to reach consensus on a candidate. If it's not possible, the board should consider reopening the search process. Settling for second-best is not satisfactory and may lead to rifts in the board at a later time. It's very important that the board be in a position to truly support a new appointee, especially in the early stages of their employment. This is a time of adjustment to both the job and the culture of the organization. During this time, board support is essential, and there should be no second-guessing or inconsistency of support for the appointed individual.
Recruiting a superintendent of schools is a very important responsibility for a board, perhaps the most important thing that you're going to do in terms of providing leadership to your school district and setting a direction for your school district. My thought is that the fundamental first step in that process is what I'm going to call "values clarification." And it has to do with making sure that you have some degree of consistency and consensus amongst the stakeholders on what values are important for the district itself and for how that relates to the values that you want for the superintendent of schools. and for how that relates to the values that you want for the superintendent of schools. You need to think of the superintendent as a highly visible person within your community. And this may sound strange to you, but it's a political position in that regard. And I don't mean that in a political way, as you might think of it as a politician, as an elected official, but a political person in terms of the outward manifestation of the district to all the people that are stakeholders. And those stakeholders include the board, the administrative staff within the district, the faculty, and all the people who are support people within the district, your, straight-on through to your custodians, your bus drivers, your children. They are stakeholders as well, your, your students, parents, community organizations, the fire companies, the Kiwanis, the Rotary, senior citizens, and also empty nesters. All of those groups, if you will, and maybe others, are all stakeholders that all have an opinion about what the school district means within the community, and also, what the school district should be doing as a responsible community agency, and an agency that is responsible for the students and their education. And I say that in two ways. It's not just about the education of students, but they also have a sense of what they want students to be able to do in terms of their social, emotional, and healthy growth. And, and things like sports, and clubs, and art, and drama, and it goes on and on like that. All of those stakeholders have certain beliefs and certain values that they hold for the district and for themselves about what they, they think is important in life. And that translates into their values for their children, and, and grandchildren, and for the school district there. So, that, they are very important things to take into consideration. Those values then translate in terms of what they expect the school to do, and therefore, what they want the superintendent to do on their behalf for that school district. It's, it's kind of strange. They give more thought to that than they do to your election as a school board member. Having said that, that superintendent is very, very important in this whole process. So, the values clarification is an essential part of selecting a superintendent. And, and I, I can't stress that enough. The key to this is making sure that you get some degree of consensus about those values, and especially how they translate to that superintendent, so that when you go through the selection process, you're doing it with those values in mind. I want a superintendent who is a, a very clear supporter of community organizations. That's a value. I want a superintendent who is a very clear supporter of sports programs. That's a, that's a, a value. I want a superintendent who is targeted at advanced placement and building relationships for affiliation agreements with colleges. That's a value. These are the kinds of things that you're gonna put into the selection process and setting criteria for the selection of, of the superintendent. You need consensus around those things. Give you an example. I, I once was doing a facilitation for a school district. That school district had hired a superintendent. The board hired a superintendent with a very specific purpose in mind. They had a financial problem. They went and they found a superintendent that had a very strong financial background. That person met their value scheme at that point in time in terms of what they wanted to accomplish as a board for that district. Unfortunately, their values were not congruent with what it is that the community valued, nor what the principals valued inside the district itself. There was a set of values that the principals held that were inconsistent with what it is that the board wanted. And the community had a very different set of values than the principals, than the board. So, I was asked to facilitate a particular process that was based upon an assumption that a change would take place that was consistent with the philosophy that the board had, and that was consistent with the charge they had given the superintendent for change. A change that was not what the parents wanted, what the community wanted, or a change that was certainly not what, what the principals wanted. So, here we had a situation where there was a conflict of values. Well, you can imagine what happened. And I'll just tell you, point-blank, the tenure of that superintendent was very, very short. He was gone within three years. And that was all because, at the get-go, in the selection process, there was a problem. The values were not clarified. The stakeholders were not involved completely in the process. There was a lack of coherence across the entire community, across the entire stakeholder group about what really mattered to them. The board may have been very right in terms of what they thought was important, but it was not consistent with what the whole community of stakeholders thought was important. Now, that doesn't mean that the board could not have found a way to place its set of concerns inside a broader context of, of, of a consensus set of values. But it did not search out that consensus set of values. It did not engage the community in the discussion of its values. And it certainly didn't build a broader set of values into the criteria for selection of that superintendent. And the results were apparent. Apparent to me as a facilitator, because I could not succeed, given what it is that board had charged me with. And that poor superintendent was destined to failure. And it was evident by virtue of his short tenure. So, from my perspective, the most important thing you do is select a superintendent. The tenure of that superintendent is, is consistent with a good process, and that process begins with values clarification. Make sure you do it right. Build it into the criteria that you have for the selection of the superintendent. And if you do it properly, you'll have a successful recruitment, and you'll have a successful attainment of the goals that you set for your school district.
A fundamental rule in the relationship between the board and the superintendent is no surprises. This rule applies to both parties. Communication channels need to be open and frequent between the board and the superintendent, and there must be an atmosphere of transparency so that all necessary information is communicated in a timely fashion. Neither party wants to be embarrassed in public because of the lack of information, or inaccurate information. Another important tenet in this relationship is that it's important to maintain objectivity and to not expect any favoritism arising out of the relationship. From the superintendent's perspective, if it is perceived by board members that he, she is favoring any board member, it is guaranteed that there will be difficulties in the relationship between the board and the superintendent over time. Similarly, if a board member attempts to ask for favors from the superintendent, it places the superintendent in a very difficult position. Superintendents do not want to disappoint board members, but at the same time, they have to maintain objectivity in their relationship with board members. If they grant favors, they compromise their ability in this regard. It is very important for the board and superintendent to operate as a team. Collaboration and cooperation between board and the superintendent is absolutely essential to assure a clear and direct message to both the community and to the school organization. Without this, there is a potential for disharmony and inconsistent implementation of any policy or programmatic objective which ultimately works to the disadvantage of the district's students. Finally, it's important for board members to recognize that the level of expertise that's available to the superintendent far exceeds that which is available to the board. The superintendent has at his or her disposal experts in education, access to lawyers, and people with years of experience in school finance. However, the board has every right to question the logic and practicality of proposals that are being brought before it for decisions, and to question the impact of decisions on students, the community, and the long-term financial consequences to the district and the taxpayers. The board has an educational responsibility to students, and a fiduciary responsibility to the community. As a consequence, there must be careful balance between the expertise that is brought to the boardroom by the superintendent and the authority that is brought by the Board of Education. Ultimately, the board and superintendent must both strive for a culture and relationship built on trust, respect, open communication, partnership, and shared mission.
The foundation of a good relationship between the board and the superintendent is good, solid communications. There's no substitute for open communications and for a, an environment of absolute transparency. The frequency of communications is also very, very important. And this is communications about events and about decisions that have taken place. And it's more than just about no surprises. It's about keeping the board apprised of the daily events that take place within the, the school districts. School district and buildings have a, have a life of their own, and things take place that are both good and bad. And I think that the board needs to hear about both the good and the bad on a, on a relatively routine basis. You celebrate the good things, and the superintendent needs to be able to share that. Now, with things like Twitter, I, I see it happening all the time where individual principals are, and individual teachers, interestingly, are sharing the good things that are happening in the classroom. And that's so great for school board members to know what's happening, to feel the spirit of what takes place in a classroom, or the good things that are happening for individual students. It's also important to know about the bad things, so there are no surprises. And once again, the key is to make this broadly available so that all board members are sharing in the communications. That facilitates the whole concept of transparency. The key in all of this, and the reason I say broad communications, is that you don't want cliques to develop. So, I, I think it's very important, especially if you have a communications director, to make sure that you, you have that communications director help you with assuring that the channels of communication are as broad as you can, so that the, the Twitter feeds, for example, hit every single board member. And that the Facebook feeds have everybody as being a friend. Make sure that the communications are as open as they can be. Make sure that the, the superintendent has got everybody on the broadcast network. And I think that that's routine. You're not gonna find too much of a problem with that. But especially when you get into the, to the more time-specific things like Twitter, Facebook, and so forth, I think it's important that you do that. Now, the key is make sure there's a two-way communication, because you're gonna hear things through the rumor mill that you need to share back with the superintendent. One of the things you're gonna find is that the rumor mill is very interesting. You think that you're hearing things for the first time. What you're gonna find is that, that usually, the school has a rumor mill that's faster than the one that, that you know of. So, by you sharing what it is you're hearing, it's, you get the information into the superintendent, and what you'll probably find is that he knows what's going on fast before you do. But it's important that you, again, copy in everybody that's on the board, so everybody is involved with the entire process. And it is two-way communications. You share what you know, they'll share what, what they know. And everybody's engaged in the process. Okay, I, I want you to think a little bit about the communication problems that take place. And, and problems in communications are really important. And I've seen this happen where, we had, we had a circumstances at a board meeting where it actually surfaced. I have had the luck and the good fortune of being very close to superintendents. And because I'm retired and have time on my hands, I have the luxury of being able to stop into the superintendent's office. And in doing so, I can just chat and cover things out of my own interest, and engage in a conversation that other people don't, who are on the board, don't have an opportunity to engage in. That creates a channel of communication that others are aware of on the board, but, and they don't, they don't have the same dynamic, nor do they have the same channel of communication, because they work every day. That creates the, the appearance of a communication flow that they become either jealous of or concerned about. Concerned about in the sense that I know stuff that they don't know, or that I'm hearing things that they don't hear, or sometimes that there's a relationship being built that they want buying on and don't have access to. So, this is the kind of thing that you have to be very, very careful about, because you don't want that to fracture the board. Luckily, in my particular case, the, one of the board members was brave enough to bring it up at a board meeting. And as a consequence, I realized that I need to be very, very careful about this relationship that I've had with superintendents. I cannot, I cannot abuse that relationship. Yes, I can make it a friendly relationship. I can make it one of, given my experience, I can make it one of a mentoring kind of relationship, or a sharing or collegial relationship in terms of just dealing with problems that the superintendent may have as a manager, because I've been a manager and administrator my whole life. But I have to be very careful that if it, if it reaches to issues that all board members need to know about, that that information is shared with everybody. There have to be, there has to be really open and transparent communications on things that matter to the board. Otherwise, I'm violating the basic rules that I'm describing to you about communication. So, you gotta be very, very careful about building cliques. You don't want cliques within the board in terms of one or two or three people being, having access to information and information channels that are not available to everybody. That creates the potential for hard feelings. And in my case, I need to be very, very careful about those kinds of relationships that I have with a superintendent. So, I encourage you to make sure that you are both transparent in terms of the types of communications and the coverage of all the different information that is available. And the other thing is make sure that, in fact, everybody's engaged in the process. Leave no one out. When you get to the openness of communications, don't be afraid to talk about the problem. And, and I want you to be very clear that when you're talking about the problem in communications, focus on the problem. Don't focus on the issue. What I mean by this is that something may have surfaced that has to do with a rumor in the community regarding what happened on a particular bus with a fight between two kids. And you know that the, the one kid's a bully. And therefore, you wanna know about the bullying incident, and, and you get, the real issue for you was that you knew about the information too late. The parents were all upset because they didn't know about the information when it, when they felt they should have known about it. The complaint that came in was about the flow of information and the timeliness of communication. You started the conversation in the board meeting. The next thing you know, it drifted into what happened with the bullying, and, and so, the whole shift took, that took place was not about the problem that originally surfaced, which was communication, but you drifted into something else. And you started looking at the incident, not the, 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 the problem of communication. You began to look at who was at fault, what blame should we lay, and, and you, you just got way off target. The issue here was the problem of communication. Focus on the problem, not on the incident, not on the, 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 the issue that caused the problem in communication. That's really important for you to, to stay focused on. If you can't resolve the issue of communication, then you have to shift to the issue of trust. Now, why do I say that? Because if you, the, the communication issue is key to building trust. When, when there's a breakdown in communication, people become distrustful. If I don't know what you're doing, or if you don't explain the information in a way that I, that I believe what it is you're telling me, then I become distrustful. If you keep things to yourself, if you don't share information that I think you should, then I begin to wonder why it is you're hiding what you're hiding. And this occurs. Sometimes a superintendent basically doesn't want to release the information until he feels that he can control the consequences of that information getting out. Yet, the information leaks beforehand. So you know what's going on, and the information leaks to you and to other board members. And you kind of know what's going on, but you know the superintendent's not telling you. And then you sit there and you wonder why. Why is that superintendent not telling me what's going on? When that information doesn't flow that way, you begin to say, gee, I don't know what's going on, but I'm beginning not to trust him. If that happens two or three times for different kinds of circumstances, different kinds of issues, you're going to not trust that superintendent. So now, we've got not just a communication problem, but we've got a trust problem. And if you cannot solve the communications problem, then you really have to deal with the trust problem, and you've got to deal with it head-on. So my sense is, in any instance where you've got a problem, focus on the problem. The key to a good relationship is communications, making sure they're open, honest, and transparent, and timely. And if there's a problem with communications, focus on it. If it doesn't get resolved, it's going to focus on, you're going to shift to distrust. So therefore, focus on the trust issue and make sure the superintendent knows that you're not trusting. And see if you can't resolve that issue. It probably has its roots in communication, and you'll kill two birds with one stone. But don't be afraid to deal with the inherent problem that's beginning to surface, which is the trust piece. Because if you can't solve the trust piece, everything is really going to go bad. And you'll end up in a situation where you may end up having to part your ways. Bottom line is, build a solid relationship with the superintendent. And I believe the most important part of that relationship has to do with openness and frequency of communications.
It's very important that the board not constrain the superintendent with regard to administering the affairs of the district. If the board has concerns about how a particular administrative task should be carried out, it should attempt to define guiding principles that the superintendent should take into consideration. The board may also wish to identify major constraints. For example, quote, "Do not exceed a budget limit of X dollars." The board should stay away from strategies and tactics, leaving these to the superintendent to develop. It's best for the board to stay out of administrative details. The board should not get involved in making personnel assignments. It's also important for a board to recognize that mistakes may occur and that adjustments will be necessary in the implementation of any major set of tasks. The board should ask for updates and progress reports on any major project. The board must also be reasonably patient, but it should also be persistent and consistent in its concerns and in monitoring of a project. In this regard, to say you're interested in the project, then forget about it for a year, and then suddenly get very interested in great detail is very unfair to the superintendent and to his administrative staff. The board should be cognizant that it establishes policy, but superintendent must administer policy. Therefore, the board must make sure that the superintendent and administrative team are comfortable that policies are administratively workable. The team is the best judge of practical implementation requirements and the impacts of policy on day-to-day operations.
When I offer personal life advice to young people, I tell them to live their lives with great passion, great patience, and great persistence. And I'm going to offer you, as school board members, the same advice when it comes to letting your superintendent manage the district. That may sound strange, but when you think about how it is that you let that superintendent manage, I want you to have great passion, great patience, and great persistence. Let me sort of explain. I want you to start by considering three styles of, or two styles of management that the superintendent has, and then we'll sort of get into why it is I think you have to have passion, patience, and persistence. First, superintendent has to have a management style that addresses day-to-day management responsibilities. Secondly, the school superintendent has to have a style of management that addresses what I'll call "school lifecycle management responsibilities." And I want you to also think about the resources at the superintendent's disposal as they carry out those day-to-day management responsibilities and those school lifecycle responsibilities. Let's talk a little bit about day-to-day management responsibilities. The superintendent has staff, principals, and administrators that help them to carry out those day-to-day responsibilities and decisions. They make decisions, sometimes on the spur of the moment. And in doing so, they're reacting to an immediate situation that has arisen, and they have to make a decision about that. There may be a bus incident, there could be a bus accident, there could be an incident regarding an accident that takes place in the school, a child gets hurt. There could be a fight in a classroom between two students. There could be a whole variety of different things that take place over the course of a day. And immediate decisions have to be made. A water main breaks, and they have to deal with it in order to deal with the health and safety of children. Those kinds of day-to-day decisions happen all the time. Some of it's as mundane as what's happening in the classroom with regard to an academic situation, a behavioral problem, it goes on and on. But they're making those decisions in the spur of the moment and based upon their knowledge and their understanding and the circumstances that are taking place. Those day-to-day decisions are over and done with by the time you hear about them. So basically, if you get information and you try to deal with it, you're second-guessing something that's already occurred. And I wanted to caution you about that. You can use it as something that is a learning opportunity for you and them, but to use it as something where you're questioning their judgment, you weren't there. You don't know the circumstances. You didn't live it. And so for you to go into a situation like that and basically want to second-guess and question why it was done, how it was done, you really have no basis to do that. Again, I think that you can have a discussion about the circumstances and so forth, but it's one of those things that you're second-guessing and, to a certain extent, meddling in stuff that you weren't there. You just don't know what was going on. So you need to be a little bit cautious about getting involved in those day-to-day kinds of things. If there is an issue that you want to discuss, it has to be done as a learning opportunity. It has to be done for its precedent-setting value for the future. And I would take it from that perspective. I would not use it as something that you're looking backwards and trying to deal with that specific problem. That doesn't do any good. It's over, it's done with, there's nothing you can do about that circumstance. What you can do is to talk with the superintendent about how it is that that becomes an opportunity for potential change in policy or practice as it affects the future. But again, that's the kind of thing that is a board discussion, not your discussion. So if, in fact, it's important enough, you should bring it to the board for discussion with the superintendent. I would have a discussion with the superintendent as to whether or not that merits a discussion at the board level. You might engage with the board president to see whether or not this should go on the agenda. Bring it to the place where, in fact, it is best discussed, and it's not best discussed one-on-one. If it's that important, bring it to the board and have a discussion about it there. So in that event, that's sort of like the day-to-day kinds of decisions that are made, and why it is that you should not get into the micromanagement kind of things that take place on a day-to-day basis. Don't find yourself in a position of meddling and stuff that is over and done with and there's not much you can do about it. If it's that important to you, there is a way for you to deal with it, and it's perspective, and there is a form within which you can deal with that. Lifecycle management issues for the superintendent are very, very different. What I have experienced is that most major changes that take place in school districts have a lifecycle of about three years. It takes almost one year to plan a major change. It takes one year to implement that change, and it takes one year to evaluate and make permanent that change. That seems like a long time, but you've got to remember something. All the time that change is taking place, school is being taught. There are kids in classrooms, there are mandates to be met, there's standards to be achieved, there are tests that have to be taken. The educational process is ongoing, and yet, the process of change is also taking place. So planning takes time, and that time is after school, it's on weekends, it's during summers. The planning process is taking place in addition to what is going on in the classroom. The implementation of change is done the same way. It's taking place outside of the day-to-day activities in classroom. Eventually, it weaves its way into the classroom activity, but it's also one of those things that is an add-on as it makes its way into the process of what's taking place in school. And then eventually, it has to be evaluated and adjustments have to be made to make sure that it fits, and that takes another year. Sounds like a long time, but a lot of time and effort goes into this, a lot of planning, a lot of implementation, trial and error, and a lot of evaluation to make sure that it's the right thing and it fits, and then it becomes permanent. This is where passion, patience, and persistence really plays off, pays off, rather. You have to have passion, because this has to be something that's the right thing to do. Everybody has to buy into this particular agenda. And this is why we have things like district goals. You really have to want to improve the reading program. Then you have to have great patience, because nothing of great significance is going to take place unless it's part of that school district lifecycle. It takes a long time to bring about change. And then you have to have patience and persistence, because if you don't have the persistence, it's not going to be followed up upon. And this is an important part of what the role of the board is, is to constantly ask for follow-up information, to constantly monitor what's going on. What gets monitored, what gets measured, is what gets done. And that's your job. If this is important and it becomes a district goal, stay on top of it. What's happening? Ask the question. What's the data? What progress are we making? Do that over the course of three years, and at the end of three years, you'll get change. But all of this is to say that you cannot macro, I'm sorry, micromanage that kind of process. That kind of activity that's associated with change at that level requires lots and lots of detail. You cannot know all that detail. That's the superintendent working with his administrators, working with the faculty, working with the staff. All of that has to be in sync in order to make that happen. There's no way that you can get involved in that kind of process. You're too far removed from it. So if you stop and think about what I've discussed, there's day-to-day management, it's already taking place. You can't micromanage that process. You can use it as an opportunity for learning and growth, but you're stepping back from the micromanagement and beginning to look at this as an opportunity for change. There's a form for you to do that. It's in the boardroom, and it's not by working on the detail. It's, let's take a look at this from a learning opportunity and a change opportunity, and it belongs within the framework of a board discussion about what we learned from this and how it is that we can improve. When it comes to lifecycle management issues, there's a lot of detail and a lot of change, a lot of planning that goes into it. Again, you cannot micromanage that stuff. And remember something, in all of these circumstances, the resources that have to be managed by the superintendent are extensive. Again, there's lots of people in this organization, all of whom have to be managed. Micromanagement by a board is impossible. You don't know all the people. You don't know all the resources that have to be brought to bear on anything that has to do with carrying out a particular task. There are subtleties in terms of who needs to be involved that you can't imagine. You just don't know. You're not part of the management structure. So micromanagement doesn't fit any of these circumstances. Whether it's day-to-day, lifecycle, or resource-based, you don't have a role. And you cannot have a role because you're too far removed. So bottom line is, be passionate, be patient, be persistent, and be at the macro level.
Tenure is a very special area in the relationship between the superintendent and the board. Note, when granted, tenure confers to certified employees the protection that they may not be terminated or disciplined without due process, including a hearing before an independent arbiter. Certified employees include school administrators and supervisors, pupil personnel employees, classroom teachers, and teaching assistants. If a superintendent recommends the denial of tenure, that denial of tenure is final, even though the board may vote to affirm that recommendation in a board meeting. However, it is common that a teacher will choose to resign rather than be denied tenure by a district, since denial of tenure becomes a part of a teacher's record when applying for another teaching position. Sometimes a teacher is just not a good fit in a district, but may be a good fit elsewhere and can earn tenure in that other district. Thus, it is in the teacher's interest to avoid a denial and just resign. If the superintendent recommends to approve tenure and the board votes to deny tenure, the first vote to deny tenure is advisory only. In this case, the board can be requested to provide a teacher with a written statement specifying the reasons for overruling the superintendent's recommendation. The teacher may respond, and the board must provide 30-day notice to a teacher of its intention to deny tenure prior to the date of the meeting at which that action will take place. At that meeting, the board can again vote to deny tenure over the recommendation of the superintendent. Consider that the denial of tenure would not only be a recommendation by the superintendent, but would also have been a function of many observations by principals of the performance of the teacher in a classroom setting. Therefore, such an action by the board should be very carefully evaluated, especially in light of the long-term impact this may have on the students taught by that teacher.
I want to share with you an important lesson about tenure that I've learned. And this may be a little bit shocking and perhaps a little bit alarming for most school board members. You will vote on tenure, and you will be given the important task of granting tenure to your faculty and to your administrators, your principals. This is an important statutory activity that you will be responsible for. But the reality is that you're at the very end of this process of granting tenure, and as such, you have relatively little ability to influence it. And that may be a little bit shocking, and it may cause you a little bit of dismay. So while you do vote on it, the reality is your choices are very, very limited. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about why that is, but my experience tells me that that is the way it really works. Your engagement in the process will vary, given the size of your school district. The bigger the school district, the more employees you have, the more buildings you have, the less your involvement in the tenure process. And that's just a function of the scale of your school district and the size of it. So it'll vary from little schools and small schools to big schools. But the bottom line is, you're still at the very end of the process, making that vote. And ultimately, the real decisions are being made by your principals and your superintendent regarding whether or not somebody's going to be retained as a schoolteacher, or as a principal, or let go early or later on in the process. However, I do believe that there is a strategy that is very important that you can put in place, and that is at the very beginning of the process, which has to do with recruitment and hiring of teachers, especially teachers. So I'm going to encourage you to really put a lot of emphasis and focus on the process of hiring people and the criteria that are used for selection. of, of hiring people and the criteria that are used for selection. I believe that this is the most important thing you can focus in on, because it's where you can have a significant influence on, on the actual appointment of the right kinds of people at the get-go. And I really believe that when you, when you do the right appointment process, when you do the right selection process, your odds of getting the right people who can be successful as teachers in your district and therefore get tenure is substantially increased. So let me, let me tell you a little bit more about why it is that I suggest this. I would begin by saying that you need to focus on what values you want for that particular employee. And I'll, I'm gonna use my own home district, Skodak, as an example. I'll tell you about what we value. And they may not, these values may not be the same that you have for your district. But when we look for new teachers, we want teachers who are gonna be innovative. We want risk takers. We want people who are willing to change. We want teachers who are willing to try new approaches, to adapt to new kinds of pedagogy. We, we, we want teachers who are willing to and have experience with collaboration. We want those who are willing to work with their peers and with people like librarians and with media specialists. We value collaboration. And we, we, these are, these are attributes that we believe are important for teachers. We, we also want them to be really good communicators, both with students and with other adults. So these are values that we have for our teachers at the get-go when we go through the interview process. We have those values, we lay them out. They are part of the criteria that we use when we go through the selection process. I think you need to do the same thing. You need to know what it is that's really important in terms of the values that you hold for the people that you wanna hire. Another example is at Tech Valley High School. One of the things that we, we do at Tech Valley High School is we have a lot of project-based learning. All of our projects have to be reality-based. They have to have a, a foundation of, of reality by tying them to the real world, which means that we engage people in the business world, or we engage people that have real experience in the not-for-profit world or in other kinds of community organizations. Therefore, we do not hire anyone who has not hired, excuse me, has not had experience in working with community partners. If somebody comes in and they have no experience in working with businesses or with not-for-profit agencies, or with independent self-employed people like lawyers or, or physicians, for example, they, they do not get hired. They're screened right, out right at the get-go. So those are examples of the kinds of values that are built right into the criteria for selection. So you need to develop those criteria right up front, and they become part of what it is you're looking for as, 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 as you review and analyze the, the attributes of the candidates you're looking for. The second thing you need to do is to focus on the process that you're gonna use. Example, are you going to ask your teachers to actually teach a class as part of that process? We, we do that routinely in Skodak. You may do that in your school district where you have the teacher come in and teach a class, and they're observed. So they get a chance to prep. You tell them what subject you want them to teach. They come in, they provide the, the instruction for the kids, they manage the class. You get to see how they relate to children, how it is that they handle behavior problems, how it is that they, they deliver the, the curriculum. You, you watch them, and you know how it is that they get along in that particular classroom setting. We also use a, a, a process of screening by the faculty themselves. We use a committee of faculty members to interview the person, and they vet as a peer group, the teacher. One of the things we found is that the teachers know who fits the culture that we have. This is important for a place like Skodak. We're small, and people have to fit our particular culture. I laid out who it is that we want from a values basis in terms of the selection criteria. What we have is people who reflect that set of values. They're very good at selecting candidates who mirror image who they are. So in terms of continuity and fit, the selection process becomes very important, especially when we use peers to interview in that process. Now, how do we memorialize all of this? Okay, fine. We have criteria, and we have a process. Well, best thing to do is for the board to have a policy that says that we're gonna have selection criteria, and we're gonna have a, a process, and we're gonna put all of this in regulations. Now, why do I say regulations? Because as a board, you want your policy to be relatively general, and then what you want is regulations to be established by the administrators. Those regulations can then be subject to review by the board. But the regulations can be changeable more easily than changing the policy. So you take a look at the regs, and you do that, let's say, once every three years. So you have a period of time where those regs stay in place, they become consistent over a period of time, but they are changeable. So that in fact, if things change and you wanna make some modifications, you can do that, but they're done through administrative processes with review by the board. But you do have the flexibility to be able to change them without having to go back in and change the policy. So I believe that if you stop and think about building culture and being able to recruit and retain the right kinds of people and make the tenure process less, less, let me say it differently, more predictable in terms of getting the right kinds of outcomes, so that you feel more satisfied about your role at the very end of the process, make sure that the very beginning of the process is the best it possibly can be.